Go ahead and call the meeting to order from the clerk call roll.
Dr. Ramona Becker.
Here.
Guy McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martine.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Diane Linas absent. We have a corner mayor.
Thank you, and with all meetings, if you please join me in a moment of silent prayer. Now please rise and join in saying of the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council, the first one in May already. The first thing for council to consider is the consent agenda, which simply consists of the minutes of our April 19th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I was out of town, so I'll abstain.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. Martine.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
You have first and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show that Councilmember O'Donnell abstained, please. Okay, then next is discussion and approval of appropriations ordinance 16-09, which is in the amounts of $312, $180, and $0.91.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 16-09.
Second.
First and second. Are there any questions or comments on appropriations ordinance 16-09? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? City requested appearances, but I do have two proclamations I'd like to bring, and we had two, but now only see one member of our place for us, so if you want to come and join me at the podium, Chief Allenberg would like to... Working, huh? Well, I appreciate you being here, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, doing proclamations, official proclamations, is one of the favorite things that I think a public service and elected official gets to do. So, May 15th, which is coming up, is Police Officer Memorial Day, and so I'm so glad you're here with us, and I'd like to read this to those at home and here in the audience as well. "To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th to May 26, 2016, as Police Officers Week, and whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including 12 sworn members of the Bel Air Police Department, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Bel Air play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the residents of the city, and whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1792, more than 18,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, which was dedicated in 1991 in our nation's capital, and whereas officers make the ultimate sacrifice every day while on patrol. Now therefore, I David Austin, Mayor of the city of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim Sunday, May 15th, as Police Officer Day in the city of Bel Air, and I encourage our citizens to remember our police officers. Further, I publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation." Thank you. It's my honor to sign this, and I'm glad you could be here for it. I'll hand that to you. Thank you. Yeah. All right, and we have a second proclamation. May is a busy month, Older Americans Month, to the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas Bel Air is a community that includes citizens aged 60 and older, and whereas the older adults in Bel Air are among of our most treasured resources, united by historical experiences, strengthened by diversity, and interpreting events through varied perspectives and backgrounds to bring wisdom and insight to our community, and whereas increasing numbers of adults are reaching retirement age and remaining strong and active for longer than ever before, and whereas the older adults in Bel Air deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to the culture, economy, and character of our community and our mission, and whereas the community can provide that recognition and respect by improving the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain active and engaged in community life, providing individualized services and support systems to maintain the dignity, independence, and self-determination of older Americans as they age, combating ageist attitudes by honoring their past, present, and future contributions. Therefore, I David Austin, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 2016 to be Older Americans Month. I urge every citizen to take the time this month to honor our older adults and the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for many of them. Our recognition and involvement of older Americans can enrich our entire community's quality of life." I'm happy to sign that. Present that to our clerk. Conclusion of the meeting. So now, I will move into citizens' concerns. I have three request to speak forms in front of me, so I will call them up individually. Do you see that we have a pretty full room here tonight? So the first one I'm going to call up is Caleb Bowers. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Caleb Bowers at 5123 North Hampton, and I can just barely see my house from here. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for your time this evening. Again, I'm Caleb Bowers, a Bel Air resident since 1994, a local area physician, a small business owner, and currently the president of the school board of Sunrise Christian Academy. I come to you tonight because of a video of April 12th Bel Air City Council workshop. At approximately timestamp 29:42 until about 35:30, a current city council member and former deputy city clerk expresses that she charged Sunrise Christian Academy and Catholic Care Center for extra sewer meters, stating specifically, "I charged Catholic Care for 28 meters when they only had the one," as she felt the rates they were paying at the time were not fair as, quote, "You have a 78-bed hospital, you know those people use the toilet," close quote. She states that there is a state law under which you could charge for extra sewer meters, but when this was investigated, she was told, "You can't charge them unless they have the meter, and you have to take it off because it is illegal to do that." Taking into account ordinance 385, first published on January 9th of 2003, signed as the ordinance by the time Mayor O'Neill on December 30 of 2002, and then reviewing the water bills to Sunrise Christian Academy from January 2003 until February 2006, it appears that Sunrise is overcharged by at least $6,236.70. I'm kind of a math nerd. So if you take into account calculating the 28 meters overcharged to Catholic Care Center over the same three-year time period, it can be estimated the Catholic Care Center was charged in excess of $30,000 above what they would have owed. And these are only the records going back to 2003. I'm told that a different computer system or record-keeping was in place prior to that, and that's all that was accessible to me at this time, and we can see that even from the beginning of these records, as old as they go back, that that overcharge was occurring. Given all of these things, I would ask that the city council cause to be conducted an independent audit of water bills during the tenure of the aforementioned deputy city clerk, make the findings known to any parties that were overcharged in such a manner, and then come to mutually agreeable repayment schedule between the aggrieved parties in the city. I hope that this can be resolved amicably. Thank you for your time, and I await your response.
Thank you so much. Second person that I have is Dr. Robert Lindstedt. Do you wish to address?
Robert Lindstedt, 5450 East 45th Street, North. Been a citizen of Bel Air for over 30 years. We've established both Sunrise Christian Academy and Millican Ministries here in Bel Air. We try our best to represent the city well, and we've done everything we can, we feel, to support the city, and including remaining here when we had offers to go other places. We have literally dozens of families in this community, and since the workshop was aired, it's hard to say, a large number of families have come to me saying, "Why in the world? A government that we thought was here to support us and to encourage us, what is, what's the reason for the overcharge?" My hope is that we can patiently wait for an audit to occur, but I think it has destroyed the reputation of this council because these people trust you, and the trust can be broken when situations are not fair. And for one to take it upon themselves to charge other than the published rate certainly is not the way to represent people. And so I hope that you'll see the seriousness of it, and I hope as well that you will decide to act promptly on this situation.
Thank you. And then I have a third card from Sharon Lindstedt. You pass? Okay. Thank you. If there's anyone else wishing to address council tonight? If not, okay, I do appreciate the comments and those coming, just to let those at home know, the public know, and everybody here, that we did do kind of a internal quick fact find, and we do have an external audit, just to check on all those things. Coincidentally, that actually started yesterday, and hopefully we'll have the results of that audit early next week, possibly by the end of this week, and we'll certainly make those public at that time. Thank you. With that, I think we'll move on to reports. The first, for my report, I have nothing official or formal to report, but wanted to let everybody know I really appreciated the tree board ceremony and the survivor tree that was planted and went into place there, I think, on Friday. I'm sorry that I missed that. Do want to remind all the residents at home and all of our citizens here in the audience as well, that Beautify Bel Air is ongoing. We're starting this month, and fire hydrants, adopt a fire hydrant, adopt a park, several ways for citizens to get involved and make our city, you know, continue to make it one of the most unique, neat, great places there are to live is ongoing. You can get more information online or go by City Hall, or look on, check us out on Facebook or Twitter. So that ends my report. With that, we'll go ahead and start with council member reports, and I think we'll start with Councilmember Betty Martine.
About all I have is I attended the REAP Board of Directors meeting at the Eisenhower Airport, and they were really asking consent for the Southwest Airlines to come into Wichita to make flights out of here and into here cheaper. I also attended the tree board planning ceremony on, and it was a wonderful ceremony. I saw several people that I've worked with in the past that attended, and all of the council members were there, and we did miss the mayor, but President McDonald did a very good job on the presentation and standing in for you, and that's all I have. Oh, I attended the CCU meeting.
Councilmember O'Donnell?
Well, I apologize for missing the last meeting. I was in Washington DC with a lot of eighth graders. We were having a great time. I think we were Mount Vernon on this day, two weeks ago, and I did want to also echo what Councilmember Martine said. I was there on Friday, and it was raining, and so the fire department let us inside, and it was great, and our county manager were there, and the chief, and all of us, and Mr. McDonald did a great job. And I just want to thank the tree board. If you guys haven't been by the fire station on the north, they've got the survivor tree, and the plaque, and everything is beautiful. So thank you. I pass that on to the tree board. And I did attend the CCU meeting. Most of it dealt with the water break with Park City, but I am up for, on the agenda for the reelection, and I would like to serve again. And then I just want to give a shout out to all the teachers. This is Teacher Week, and McDonald's had breakfast, and then Chipotle had buy one, get one, so to all the teachers, oh, excuse me, teachers out there, I just want to say, have a great week, and it's a real blessing and privilege to teach. And thank you for everyone for being here tonight. That's all I have.
I'd like to go in a little bit further depth with what Councilwoman Martine and Dr. Becker and I attended, a little bit more depth with what Mrs. Martine said, and the three of us attended this REAP meeting. And REAP stands for Regional Economic Area Partnership, and the Board of Directors was meeting that day, and the focus of that meeting was Eisenhower Airport has hired, what for lack of a better name, is a marketing firm in order to market certain things. And this organization asked that the REAP members, as well as other members of the economic community, consider what Southwest Airlines has done for this community. They have come in here, and because of their skill at discounting, they caused other carriers who operate out of Dwight D. Eisenhower Airport to reduce their fares. Fares have been reduced since, oh, 2031 percent, and fares have been reduced to the major destinations from Dwight D. Eisenhower Airport by 14 percent. And this, and so the point of the presentation made by this marketing organization was that there was a flight to Dallas from Dwight D. Eisenhower, as well as a flight to Chicago, and they were very important flights, but they were nonproductive, they were nonprofit-making. So those flights were canceled, and it was pointed out that this is a very serious matter relative to keeping Southwest Airlines in this community. So they have initiated two other flights, one from Dwight D. Eisenhower to St. Louis, and one from Dwight D. Eisenhower to Phoenix, Arizona, and these are hubs for Southwest Airlines. And again, it was pointed out that Southwest Airlines rarely comes to a community the size of Wichita and the general area. They tend to go to much larger metropolitan areas, and to lose Southwest Airlines if they are unsuccessful in their flights to St. Louis as well as to Phoenix, that will be a significant loss, because what will happen, in the opinion of this marketing firm, is that fares will gradually go up. There was a time before, this was way before Southwest, but I remember standing next to someone, and they ordered a ticket to New York City, they had to pay $1,800 for that ticket, and it was a businessperson, and they had to go, and they had to be there the next day, so they had to charge that price. I think prices now are in the $300 range. It was also said that if you leave Wichita at Dwight D. Eisenhower in the morning, and you go to New York and land at LaGuardia, you can land early in the afternoon, and if you're a businessperson, then you can do your pre-work on that day, rather than getting into LaGuardia and New York City and to your hotel, than doing some work at night and maybe doing something early in the morning. So that's a great advantage. The same thing going west to Phoenix. They can, they connect with Sacramento, with San Francisco, with Los Angeles, with San Diego, and again, they do so on an excellent, plurry manner. They have been said to be the most on-time airline in the United States, and the woman who made this presentation to this group, to the REAP Board of Directors, stated that she travels quite a bit, and she would never take a landing at 15 minutes and then connect with another flight. She said, "You can do that with Southwest because they are so on time, and St. Louis is such a good airport for Southwest that all their gates are right together, so you can go directly to a gate and get on." Most flights, she said, from LaGuardia East and LaGuardia West, connect within an hour. And so that's a significant difference than my experiences when I was traveling abroad. So the, this marketing group asked that the REAP members, and there are quite a few, talk to their constituents, talk to the city like Bel Air, for example, and ask if, when considering flights, either on a business or for a city or for whatever reason, if you would look at Southwest first, then they would hope that that would increase their passengers and, their passengers and fill the planes and keep them in this particular area. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Becker?
I know Southwest is going to be very happy you did that. Thank you. And Southwest is a great airline, and we do have a number of really good airlines in the Wichita area, and we're thankful for all of them and all the people they employ. And so that was a very interesting meeting, and they did just give a really great presentation. I want to say just another word about the tree board's dedication that we had on Saturday at our fire station here in Bel Air. I actually got a tear in my eye when they were talking when Gary Northwall, our president of our tree board, was describing the significance of the survivor tree and their trip they made to Oklahoma, and how meaningful that is, that that one tree survived after that horrible, horrible incident that that city suffered. So it was an outstanding presentation, and it was good to see so many people there. Our Sedgwick County manager was there, Mike Scholes, and I don't know the name of the fire chief for Sedgwick County, but he was there too, and gave a real nice presentation.
Thomas Leek.
Yes. And there is a video, I think on Twitter still, and probably on a couple of other places online, that you can watch of what happened that day, and it's really outstanding. If you're on our Twitter feed for Bel Air, you got a link to that video, so be sure to check that out. That was a very nice, nice event, and we're so thankful our tree board did that. We also learned at that event that our tree board has really gained a lot of recognition for our city, for all the work they've done in other communities too, and for the traveling you've done with your work. So we appreciate that, and the people that serve on that committee. I also wanted to mention that I learned something else that day that I didn't know. Because they let us come into the station because of the rain, I saw this great big raft in there, a water craft, and I said, "Oh, what's that for?" And they said, "That's if we have to rescue somebody out of the water." And I didn't realize they had that kind of equipment at our fire station, and I think that's wonderful that they do, and I feel very reassured of that, because we have a pond in our neighborhood, as do a lot of other neighborhoods in the city of Bel Air, and the first year I was here, one of the dogs in our neighborhood actually drowned in our pond, and it was cold, icy day, and our pond is deep, about 20 foot deep, and so we certainly appreciate that our firefighters are now equipped to help in instances that it's needed, not just for dogs, but for people, because we have lots of little kids and other people that are around our ponds in the city all the time. So that's good to know. If you need a rescue, our firefighters, right here in Bel Air, are ready to help you out. And I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'd like to say a couple other comments before we go to our city manager, just listening to the council members up here. We, Dr. Becker was just talking about the safety, and you know, Bel Air is constantly ranked one of the most safest cities in the state, and we already had an opportunity to say hi to our police chief who is here tonight, but I think I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize the fact that our county manager and Bel Air resident is here. So I just want to say thank you for being here, Mike, and for choosing this fantastic city to call home. We're glad you're here. Couple of other things that I want to let the public know, just to let everybody know that Councilmember Winn actually did tell us well in advance that she would miss tonight. She's traveling for work, so did want people to know that. And a couple of other things, just talking about the trees, the tree board, I want to remind people, we actually have a couple of openings on our tree board, and I saw that now we have our new sign, "For more than two decades, we have been a Tree City USA," and I think that's something we should be extremely proud of. And something else I think we should be extremely proud of, that I want to go back, you know, we have a full room here tonight. I'm so happy to see so many people here and taking interest, but just how this governing body has made it a point to be transparent and to be open. Our, you know, our checkbook is open through all the appropriations ordinance. All of that is online. All of our meetings are online, our workshops are minutes, and they're also, you know, being shown live now, then it repeats. So that's something, I mean, even all of our emails are even all subject to Freedom of Information Act. I mean, that's, we're not hiding anything up here. So with that, like I said, just remind people that we will take this audit seriously and report the results, hopefully in the very near future, but again, just wanted to remind folks of that, and all the reassurances that I think citizens can have for our Bel Air government, and for our county government, and for our safety officers. So thank you. And with that, I'm going to pass it down to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items I wanted to mention. Last Saturday, we had Take Back Prescriptions events. On Saturday, our police department hosted that along with DEA. It was very successful. They had roughly 175 cars that came through, and they collected about 200 pounds of medications, and that will be proper, DEA will take that and properly destroy that. It's, that's an important thing anymore, because, you know, we don't want others, kids, pets to actually, you know, ingest some of that by accident. The other issue that we're having problems is municipalities and water districts, anybody that provides water, we're finding that that, people are flushing that, and our water treatment and our sewer treatment plants don't have the capability to get those medications out of the system. So when sewers cleaned and discharged into lakes or streams, and then it's picked back up by downstream users, and again, the water purification process doesn't take those out, and so that's starting to become an issue that cities and water districts are looking at, is screening some of that out. So that's why it's so important for citizens. We're going to do another one this fall, so we'll let everybody know when that's coming up. This Saturday, the e-recycling and paper shredding is here at City Hall from 9:00 to noon. The Lions Club hosts that for us and provide all the labor, so if anybody's got any old cell phones, or computers, or TVs, things like that, they can come by and they take it for free. Now, I think some of the old TVs that have the CRTs in them, they may charge, but the flat screens, there is no charge, and so that's a good way to get rid of that. And then the paper shredding, we just came through the tax season, so if anybody's got old tax records they want to shred up, they do it right here on site, and so it's a good way, safe way to get rid of any documents that you don't want to end up in the landfill or possibly blow down the street. The last thing is, the Brush Site is open, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, and again, it's located between, on 53rd Street, between Rock and Webb, and with all the wind and things that we had, storms we had last week, people may have some down limbs and things they need to get rid of, so... So just hold on to it, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, they can take it out to our brush site. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. With that, we'll move right into ordinances, resolutions, and final action. And the first thing to come before council tonight is the confirming my recommendation reappoint Ty Lasher as Bel Air city manager. Under the council manager form of government, the government, you know, the governing body appoints a city manager, city attorney, and municipal judge every single year, which is why you see those on the agenda this, this evening. To let everybody know, this historically has been done in May after the elections, so that's why we're doing that. But therefore, I would like to recommend that council reappoint Mr. Lasher as our city manager.
Mr. Mayor?
We both want to say.
Go ahead. Rebecca?
I'd like to make a motion to confirm the reappointment of Ty Lasher as Bel Air city manager.
Second. And I, Mr. Mayor, I am glad to see this back on because I was a little concerned when it was tabled, so I am glad that we have this back on.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Thank you, Ty.
Yes, thank you. Second, now I'd like to, on the same guidelines, I would like to recommend that council reappoint Allison McKenney Brown as our city attorney.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
I make a motion to confirm the reappointment of Allison McKenney Brown as the Bel Air city attorney.
Second.
Oh, excuse me.
Hey, you two.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. And then third is, I'd like to recommend that council reappoint Greg Keith as our municipal court judge.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm the reappointment of Greg Keith as a Bel Air municipal judge.
Second. Go ahead.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And I think that speaks here when we have good people and we want to keep them, but are eager to move along. And along those same lines, now that we've reappointed them, I do the city manager being appointed annually and, of course, there is some uncertainty that I guess come with that. We actually use an employment agreement. Council reviewed that agreement and asked for optional bonuses based on land sales be removed. Mr. Lasher only received one bonus that I'm aware since that was added in 2013. I don't think anything since then. And I've spoken with him and he's just fine removing that language. I know there's some concern about that, so I would hope there would be a motion to approve his employment agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the revised employment agreement with Ty Lasher and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering, we put that in in 2013, is that right? 2012?
I believe so, yeah.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I'm going to approve him because obviously I want to, but I'm, I'm not really understanding why we took that out, but I just wanted to make it public. I will agree to it, but I'm not real thrilled with the revision.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving right along, we're not a large enough community, Bel Air, we're not, to employ a full-time attorney, only I know sometimes I'm sure it feels like it, right, Allison? But therefore, we contract for these services with Allison. The agreement that's before your packet identifies her hourly rate, number of hours per week and duties. And hopefully, council's had the opportunity to review this agreement and look for a motion to approve her agreement as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the revised legal services agreement with Allison McKenney Brown and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have first and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. And the third now, we have, Bel Air, just to let the public know, we hold municipal court twice a month. Therefore, we only need a judge on those two dates due to the fact that a judge is to be nonpartial. A legal binding agreement can cause ethical issues for the judge. That's why we have a memorandum of understanding. It's created to simply identify the rate of pay for the judge that will preside over municipal court, which is why that's a little bit different than an agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve the revised memorandum of understanding with Greg Keith and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a charter ordinance creating a storm, a storm, excuse me, water utility here within the city limits. Bel Air is responsible for storm water control and the infrastructure that handles all the runoff, curbs, culverts, bridges, retention, pond, drainage. These are all examples of what we must maintain so that we mitigate flooding. Until now, such repairs were taken out of the street fund, which reduced the amount we could spend on streets. Since we were able to renegotiate a 10-year agreement with Waste Connections and lower the trash rates by $2 a month, we felt that this would be a great opportunity to start such a fund as it would have, would have not financial impact on our citizens. So therefore, you know, it's not going to cost citizens anything more. We discussed this quite a bit at our April workshop, but I would ask if council is comfortable creating the Storm Water Utility Fund.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve a charter ordinance exempting the city of Bel Air, Kansas from the provisions of the Water Pollution Act, KSA 12-3101 through KSA 12-3107, and providing substitute and additional provisions relating to the establishment, operation, and maintenance of sewer and stormwater management systems and establishing certain fees related thereto and permitting the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for necessary grounds and improvements for the operation of such system and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? I mean, a charter ordinance does call for a roll call. Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Diane Winans absent, and I vote in the affirmative, so that passes. Next is our agreement of solid waste collection and recycling services. The current preferred hauler agreement with Waste Connections expires next month. Staff sent out RFPs to 16 different haulers. Sad to say, we only received two back, Waste Connections and Waste Management. And staff spent quite a bit of time comparing the proposals, obtaining additional clarification some council members had, and then brought the proposals to the council for consideration. We accepted the proposal from Waste Connections on that 10-year agreement at the March 15th meeting. And at that time, when we directed our staff to negotiate that contract. So that is what is before council tonight, now that that contract is ready for approval. The agreement, I do want to point out that the agreement does not include any additional fees for fuel and requires council approval for any rate changes, which was something I think some of us have concerns about. So would ask if a council is comfortable moving forward with Waste Connections for trash and recycling.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to thank staff for all the work that they did on this. I think getting a 10-year agreement is a real positive for our city, that we have locked into this. And so with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the agreement for solid waste collection as single-streamed recycling services with Waste Connections of Kansas Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Let's see, I gave it to you last time. Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay.
Thank you.
And along those lines, again, like we just talked about with the, the agreement and all of that, I do want to have a resolution, since the city is creating the storm water utility, or since we just created the storm water utility, that 2016 fee schedule needs to be adjusted to show that $2 monthly residential fee and the $10 monthly commercial fee. In addition, the trash fees for residents are being reduced by that $2. So is there a motion to approve the revised fee schedule?
Mr. Mayor, before everybody votes, just to remind you that having passed the charter, the city will wait 60 days for it to go into effect, at which time, staff will bring back a proposed utility. And at the time we bring back the proposed utility, you will decide what amount you may or may not want to charge for that. So just so that nobody thinks that that's something that would go into effect immediately, we're at least at a minimum 60 days away from starting anything.
And so we'll have a chance to vote on that again. Or not vote, but negotiate.
You can put, you can put the $2 into the fee schedule, but that only just sets a range. It doesn't say that that's what the city is going to adopt.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
But, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification for the public, we're not raising the fees because we were able to save that on our negotiations with them, correct? I just wanted the public to know, they won't see an increase because I think some of them will be worried about that.
They probably will see.
It'll change out on their bill, how it's posted.
Because we won't be able to start the billing for storm water for at least 60 days, there may be actually a month in there where they will see the $2 reduction before you're able to get the storm water utility actually adopted.
So they might be happy to get less. Thank you.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution concerning service license and permit fees within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas.
Second.
First and second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Next is consideration of selecting a CCU A board member. And I'll tell you, the council member, Martine, serves as one of our alternates. I know she's come to some of these meetings and I've been on it three years and I'm still learning what all is involved. My goodness. So you county people, you keep track of all, with all that. But our CCU A board is made up of the mayor from each city, a council member from each city, and a council member or a resident. Right now, council member Peggy O'Donnell has served on the CCU A board since her election in 2005. And I'd just like to say, I think that's, just the stuff that you know is invaluable on that. And currently serves as the secretary. Said earlier that she's willing to continue serving on the board for another two years. And just to let folks know, I think then Ken Lee actually still stays on for another year, then we'd have another opening, so we'd have time for that. But at this point, would like to, I'm happy to hear that you stay on, so. But we need a motion from our council on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to appoint Peggy O'Donnell as a CCU A board member of 2016 to 2018.
Second.
We have first and a second. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And final item is that KDHE requires all entities providing water to customers. We maintain a water conservation plan. This plan identifies what actions the city will take if there is a drought or system problems. This plan was reviewed by staff as well as our utility advisory committee. It's kind of, like I said, something flows down from the state that we go through every year, but do need to have a council approve that. So if council was comfortable with the recommendation of the utility advisory committee to approve the plan, I would certainly entertain that motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2016 municipal water conservation plan for the city of Bel Air and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. For discussion and future issues, just want to remind everybody that we have, our next workshop is a week from today at 6:30. The two agenda items that we have so far, where our police chief's going to kind of talk about the emergency plan. And we'll have our very, very beginning stage preliminary budget talk. So those are kind of the two items at this time that are on that agenda. You know, if anybody else had future issues they'd like to bring up?
Mayor, I don't have a future issue, but I would like to clarify something, if that's okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that, as far as I'm concerned, the tabling of the contracts at our last meeting for our city manager and our attorney does not reflect any kind of trepidation or concern about either of those parties. It was on, as far as I was concerned, because the contracts were not included in our packet and I personally don't like to approve something I haven't read carefully, especially a contract. And so I felt perfectly good and I'm sure the other council members probably did too. We did receive those immediately after that meeting, which I really do appreciate. And so there was no other, I hope nobody has any other thoughts about that.
Yeah, the one but not the second.
Yeah, just, you know, something that I think is good business practice. You always read a contract before you approve it or sign it.
Anything else to come before council this evening? Is there anything, Bob? I have no need for an executive session.
I just want to say, Mayor, I forgot to say to all the moms, Happy Mother's Day on Sunday.
Yes.
Yeah. We almost forgot.
Okay. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our.